It is Tuesday, March the 5th. Let the record show that this meeting began at 7:00 PM. I would ask that the Acting Clerk, Gloria, please call the roll.
Trustee head?
President.
President Klein?
Yeah.
O'Brien Berglin? Absent. Dan Ortner? Absent. Darrell Staniford?
Here.
Stan Wicken?
Here.
Mark Zappa?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. We have the meeting minutes from the February 5th, 2013, meeting. I have those minutes in front of you. I wonder if we have anyone who would like to make a motion to approve them?
Well, George.
Thank you, Mark. Second?
I'll second.
Are there any comments, any edits, any corrections?
I would like one edit. Comments from the floor. The second sentence, Atkins proposed to the Board the opportunity for the village to become, it says involvement with the Loop Trail.
The with.
It should be involved with the Loop Trail, I think.
Thank you. Good catch, Dan.
It spooks me when I do stuff like that, you know.
Very pleased that you guys read these meeting minutes. On that topic, Stan, I was asked to see if we wanted to put something on the Board for this evening about putting together a, propose the Board of, an opportunity. Yes, we do want to become involved, but I thought it better to wait until you take office. If, in fact, you do take office on the 2nd.
If I don't, if Mickey Mouse doesn't beat me, I will be okay.
And we'll take it from there with a new Board. So, thank you. Any other edits or corrections? If not all in favor accepting the meeting minutes as presented, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you. As I look around, I see only one guest here this evening. This is the opportunity for residents to make the Board aware of any topics, issues, or opportunities that are not on today's agenda. Mrs. Klein, are you here to make any comments to the Board? No, thank you very much.
Careful, George.
All right. I have nothing to do with item number four. Item number four. Who's going to do that?
Well, George, President Klein, I've, as if I possibly could be never replacing, but following in your footsteps, perhaps. We have a slight, or a small presentation. I am not the orator. If you'd like me, we should probably go, I will go to the podium so we have a chance for Doug to have photo op. And we have a little presentation that, for your, it says on our agenda, "Years of dedicated service."
George, I think that means you gotta get up.
Oh. I have to come up there?
No, I'll invite you, and it's your turn. I'm getting the camera right now. It's like, you know, I mean, they got the wide-angle lens on, we're good to go. But, "Years of dedicated service." I've only known George, you know, throughout the village and the time I've been on the Board. And, you know, a lot of people, I mean, he's been involved in local politics, he's served on the school board, I believe, for like, six years. I think that's an accurate number. He was a trustee from, for the village from 2002 until 2009. Seven years, and then we're up to 13. And now, he's been village president from 2009 to the present. And he is apparently tired of public service, or I think his bride and him have plans now for the future without being involved in a lot of the village politics, although he will not get out of it that easy because I'll be calling him on speed dial as I have questions if I'm elected. You know, and contrary to popular belief, you know, dedicated public servant, there's, you can't control, and, you know, the weather, you can't control a lot of different things, and you can't fix all problems. One of the counsel George has had means, like, never, ever tell anyone, "I'll take care of it." You know, that's something I've learned already. So, that is something that is very important. Let's see, what do I got here in my notes? Oh, some of the things that George has accomplished, or has had, you know, has occurred during his time is, he's basically bought the village hall up to the 21st century. I think Chief Rickert and those involved in the village here are very happy, they're no longer down in the dungeon of the basement, and we have a hall that we can have public events and enjoy and not be ashamed of when we walk, you know, when people come to, "What do you got here in North Hudson?" And I think that's a very big accomplishment and is very well received. He's also been involved in organizing, or was very much involved in organizing and setting up the centennial. We just had a very successful centennial in last year, in 2012, and the, you know, we have, we had a little, you know, I mean, had a lot of fun at the centennial, and we, you know, made little, some money that we can have signs, you know, to say, "Welcome to North Hudson." That the state won't let us put up, but that's something that we're being, that's being worked on. And so, that's another accomplishment. He's been members of numerous committees throughout his time in service with the village. He's been involved with EMS committee and kept us involved in, you know, with the county in keeping us up so that if there is an issue that we can be well-served by those different groups. And he's been involved in public safety and governmental. And, George, if you would care to join me, President Klein, at the podium, I would like to present you with a small token of the village's appreciation. It says, you know, it's President, or it's George K. Klein, I don't know what the K. is, but President of the North Hudson Village. And we have a timepiece, it's not a gold watch, because everybody knows the price of gold right now. Sorry. We even got, you know, in the village, we're fiscally responsible, can't do that. But it is a very nice clock. Says, "George K. Klein, President, 2009-2013. Village of North Hudson, in appreciation of your years of service and dedication to our community." And he is very dedicated to our community, and for that, we are greatly appreciative.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you, George. Picture? Can Tony come up, please?
Picture?
Yep. Absolutely.
In fact, I remember when this picture was taken. Our daughter was here on a visit, which was when I became President of the village. Okay, we're gonna take two. Here's the first one. There we go. Do another one.
Smile, George, come on.
It's looking good?
Yes, it is. Thank you very much. Thank you. This is beautiful.
It's all right, I'm not gonna have it displayed this way while I'm here. Thank you very much. It has been a pleasure to serve this community, and I'm not done serving it yet. I only intend to stay involved, and at least for the next year, I will stay on the EMS Commission. And I look forward to serving there, as well as any other place that I can serve in the community.
For only one more year?
As a trustee.
Okay.
We have a resolution to appoint Melissa Lukey as our village clerk. And Gloria, would you like to take over on this?
No?
Oh. All right. We have a resolution here on, I'm going-
Who to approve Resolution Number 2013 dash zero two. Resolution appointing Melissa Lukey as village clerk. Second.
Very good. I don't have control over the camera, but I, Melissa, would you like to just stand up so that residents can get to meet you? Thank you very much. We're looking forward to Melissa being our clerk. Gloria and I have, had interviewed a number of people, and Melissa was definitely the standout. We are excited to have you here with us.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Appreciate it.
We have a resolution, and now that you've all had a chance to, and I know that you did meet Melissa earlier this evening, I will now ask for a roll-call vote. Excuse me, I don't have who seconded that motion.
I did.
Thank you. We'll now have a roll-call vote, and let's start with Ted.
Yes.
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 Thank you very much. Item number six on the agenda is to reschedule the April village Board meeting. This is customary, we do it every year because of the election that takes place on what would normally be our Board meeting date, the second, the first Tuesday of the month. And so, we always move it to the last Tuesday of the month of March, which will be March 26th. Want to move finance, too?
Sure.
That's a good idea. All right. Why don't we do that? Okay. Finance, and I don't think we need a motion on that, do we?
For the Board, move?
We do?
Yep. It needs to be a two-thirds majority vote.
All right. All in favor of rescheduling the meeting to March 26th, indicate, oh, do we need a roll call? Nope. Thank you.
Two-thirds majority vote?
If it's unanimous, if there are no nays, then it'll work.
There you go.
All in favor of rescheduling the meetings to March 26th, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item number seven is new business from the Board or staff. President's comments come first. You see, there are only two things on there, but I know this wouldn't surprise you, I've got a couple others. Library funding update. I'm not gonna go into the detail because in the back of your packet, there is quite a bit of information, all of which has come from the collaboration of the county and also Neil Saltis from the city. If you have any questions regarding that, please contact myself or the two authors of these documents. In a nutshell, the village is in very good shape next year, and we will be able to finance the library as we have in the past. And those numbers are in there for your review. Village communication. I remember years ago, people used to complain that we didn't communicate well with them, that they didn't know what was going on, and it was somehow our fault. And so, we began by, or we began to solve the problem by putting out, sending out letters, postage, envelopes. I believe the latest estimate, if we were to continue doing that, would be something in a neighborhood of $600. We don't do that anymore. Instead, what we have is, and I've got a list here, and as Gloria and I started listing these, I was actually surprised at how many avenues there are for our communication with the public. First of all, there's the village website, the police department is on Facebook, the Hudson Star Observer, both newspaper and the weekly, and the website. And while I'm mentioning and giving some credit to the Hudson Star Observer, I have, and I'm gonna hold it up here, this is the public notices section. And in here, listed are Village of North Hudson ordinances, ordinance, public notices, resolutions, Village of North Hudson, public notice. If you want to know what's going on in the village, the Hudson Star Observer is definitely, right? Doug, the best place to turn. I would also give credit to Patch Cable TV, which is community access, and their website. And if all else fails, and you really have a burning question, you can call one of the, you can call the President or any one of the six trustees, and you can call the staff, who will be more than happy to answer your question. As Stan alluded, actually, he didn't allude, he actually came out and said it. If you have a concern and you call me, what I'm going to do is I'm going to give you the phone number of the person who can solve your problem or answer it. Okay? So, did I leave anything out?
I don't think so.
All right. That takes care of item number two. Now, next. Community access Board meeting. It meets the fourth Tuesday of each month. I attended the community access Board meeting on February 26th, and there is one coming up on March 26th. That is the morning, it's 8 o'clock in the morning of our, of my last Board meeting as President. And I need someone to attend that, and it has to be one of the trustees. So, I'm not going to embarrass you all right now, but I would hope someone get in touch with me and say that you would be available for an 8:00 AM meeting. It lasts about 25 minutes.
What's the date, George?
March 26th. That's a Tuesday. Okay. Next on my list of things to discuss and just mention is, this morning, I attended a Board of Supervisors meeting, St. Croix County Board of Supervisors, in which John Chiglo, did I pronounce that right? Chiglo. He is the project manager for the St. Croix River Crossing Construction Project, and he gave an excellent presentation. There are presentations going on really all over the St. Croix Valley regarding updates. I would like, if I, I would love to have been able to tell you to just go to the St. Croix River Crossing website, and you can Google that or Bing it. And, but as John told me when I asked the question, he said, "Unfortunately, things are changing at such a rapid rate that they can't keep their website up to date." So, I would encourage you, if you have any questions about it, you can get in touch with John's office. Go onto website, and you'll see some contact information. I am very pleased with how it is moving along, I'm impressed with the progress, and also with, as John pointed out, some of the savings that we're realizing already. I also have in front of me regarding the bridge, this is something from our own Hudson Star Observer, and I just want to read a little bit about the, just very, just a short paragraph. "Plan focuses on the southern corridor. While uncertainty continues over the exact location of the proposed Stillwater-Holton Bridge, the focus is gradually shifting to the south side of Stillwater, the Minnesota-Wisconsin Boundary Commission learned. The approximate cost of the project is $24 million, with equal appropriations coming from each state. Another option, a tunnel beneath the river, would cost about $150 million, an obvious deterrent, according to spokesmen for the project." And that was in the Hudson Star Observer on Thursday, February 18th, 1988. If only we'd built then, huh? $24 million, imagine that. 25 years ago. The final bit that I have for you this evening is, and here's where I put on my, this is, somebody said this is gonna be scary. No, it isn't. I'm here to promote, without a doubt, one of the most remarkable books ever written and ever published in the village of North Hudson's history. It is the North Hudson, Wisconsin Centennial Book. It's a cookbook, it's a history book, it's everything you could possibly want. Now, you'll notice up in the top-left corner here, we have a price tag on here of $20. Being the President of the Board, I remove that $20, and I change it to $15. Not only that, if you act now, for a limited time and a limited time only, we're going to include a centennial button, a $1 value, which you can get free when you purchase a cookbook. How was that?
Very good.
Did I get it?
You got it.
That's it. About worn out. Here.
You're making Stan very nervous over here. He's sitting over here on the fireplace.
Good.
Maybe he would've been done by now. Oh, no, never mind.
It is now an opportunity for our administrator. Do you have any comments that you would like to make?
George, I do not think I could follow your lead, so I'm gonna pass.
Okay. Melissa, as the village clerk, this is a time when you can say pretty much anything you want.
Okay, just a reminder that the spring election will be held on April 2nd, so everybody be sure to get out to vote.
Thank you very much. All right. Boy, first night on the job. Plan Commission, I see Mr. Misers here. Mike, you don't come to these meetings unless you have something to say, so.
That's correct.
We will give you the podium. Please bring it back when you're done.
First of all, I'd like to congratulate you on the successful completion of your term. I don't know what that's like, because my term and the Plan Commission was up this last year, and there was a stealth reappointment I saw on the bulletin board, I was up for three more years. I thought this was the Hotel California, that you could never leave.
It was a hard-fought battle. The campaign was amazing.
Yes. It, a pleasure working with you.
Thank you.
We had a very short meeting on February 20th, Hunter. And just getting to the second order of business of the Plan Commission, it was the Whispering Oaks Extraterritorial Subdivision Phase Two Final Plat. And we discussed it briefly, we talked to, John Perotti was there, he gave us an update of where we are, and we had a few questions about traffic, and we approved it unanimously to recommend approval as it was presented. And that was our meeting this month, in February.
Anybody have any questions, Mike? John, right? Any questions, John? He's, he came with his posters, and I don't want him to feel that it was a wasted trip, so, John, why don't you go up and just teleport a little bit about what you have, and then we will entertain a motion.
John Sonatig with Granberg and Sonatig Land Solutions. I was not able to attend the last meeting. Mr. Perotti with SEH, who did the design work for the subdivision road, was here in attendance, and we're flip-flopping, he had a meeting tonight, so I'm here. Basically, the project, the tough road was already traveled down with the preliminary plat process. All the major issues were kind of addressed at that time. Preliminary plat was approved, I believe it was in 2010, from the town, the county, and the village, and as well with the state for the original plating requirements. Since that time, then, there was the first phase of construction in which the final plat was presented to all those parties again and approved, and lot sales have been well, have been really well, and they've been successful to sell pretty much all the lots, and it's been well-received. And with that in mind, and with the opportunity to give Mr. Klein one more plat approval, they were ready to move forward with the, with the next one. And I guess on a tidbit with that, I guess I would offer up to, I haven't had many opportunities to come to this hall here to have projects approved, but I do get a chance in my line of work to go into a lot of different communities, and I would have to commend Mr. Klein for the manner in which he holds his meetings, he does a really nice job, so.
Thank you.
But, but after, you know, with that, once the approval is, we've gone through the town of Hudson, they had no issues or concerns at this time, and were basically slated, as soon as the weather's permitting, to go out and construct the next section of the road. And then, at that point, the county would accept the final plat to record those lots. And then, there'd be one final phase left, one little section of road left after that, one slot sales out to where they want, that they would come back with a third and final phase. So, with that, if there's any questions anyone has of me, I can hopefully answer them.
I think so, 'cause each one is. You just need to confirm for me, this is in the extraterritorial, right?
Correct.
This is in the town of Hudson?
Correct, correct. Town of Hudson, private well, private septic sewer.
I don't, what maps, if you have maps-
Yeah, we get the same one.
I know where it's at, I just trying to get the boundaries in my, my head, but I was pretty sure that this was in the extraterritorial.
A little bit of a snapshot up in the corner, but basically, we're in the green, the second phase, and then the other map that you may have is just corporate detail, not dimensioning of the-
That is, yeah. That's the one we have. John, just for the public who is, may be watching this, put this in relation to where North Hudson is.
So, we're looking at Cratley on the south end of the project.
That's cr, okay.
And so, Cratley heads out to the west, and it must be about a mile and a half, I suppose, by the time you get back out to the 35. The village limits, I believe there's probably, there may be almost 1,500 feet before we'd get to the village limits of this direction. I think some of the, I think it was the, some of Zappa property was up that way.
Yeah.
See that big yellow on the right, upper right?
Right, right, yep. So, it's still a little bit further out from the yellow on the right, but it's down Cratley.
From a perspective standpoint, if you rotated that 90 degrees.
Mm-hmm.
Good. See, now we see Cratley as the east-west road on the far-right side, and now people would see, okay, I'm going out Cratley, and it's off to the left.
Correct.
All right? I just, just so people get a sense of perspective of-
It's a, I mean, a few hundred yards short of the, I'm not gonna draw a blank on the subdivision name, there's a few pillars at the end there before you get into, I'm drawing a blank, I think it's, I do even as well, Eagle Ridge, is that what it says on the side?
Yeah.
And so, that loops back around, and the first phase did make a connection back in with that Miller Road.
Yeah.
That just swings back through, and another road comes off and makes a connection back into the project.
Okay, as I understand it, Mike, all the Board needs to do is to approve the Whispering Oaks Extraterritorial Subdivision Phase Two as presented.
With, with one condition, just that you give us a copy of the final plat once you get it recorded.
Correct, sure. And we'll be back to get a signature of that.
You have a motion?
Just have to make sure I correct our, our second sheet to not have Mr. Klein's name on there.
All right.
I have just one question.
Did we get a second?
Oh, second.
What are the two outlets?
Who made the first?
Colleen seconded.
Down on the bottom, right on the bottom.
One here, one up here.
Okay. So, the, the one down here, the way, they had enough land at that time, they were trying this, they had this structure on this lot.
Gotcha.
And they wanted to make sure they didn't make that spot non-conforming, so they kept 50 feet away from it from the edge of the right away. So, that kind of left a little strip of extra land that they chose this map as an outlot. And working with the town of Hudson, there, it'll probably end up being deeded to the adjacent landowner there, once all the project, the entire, all three phases are done. And then, the other one was basically what was left at the time of land that wasn't gonna be a lot yet. So, a term that the county usually likes to see as an outlot, just so no one tries to put a home on there. So, it's just kind of put out there in reserve until the next project comes. So, on the, on this phase, we look at the detailed final plat. Again, there's use of the term "outlot," but in danger of what's happening, used for residential housing.
Anybody else have any other questions? I'm gonna do a roll-call vote, and I'd like to start with Colleen.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mike. Claims, next on the agenda, and the only thing we have here is some claims. Mark, do you remember the motion that you made during the Finance Committee meeting? You want to repeat that for us?
Melissa, what did I say?
That wasn't a joke.
I'd like to move to approve the December 2012 non-recurring claims of $589.76, and March 2013 non-recurring claims of $66,864.98, for claims totaling $67,454.74.
Second. Any questions? Roll-call vote, this time we'll start with you, Ted.
Yes.
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 All right. Public Works.
We've got two items I must present. First of all, at our last Public Works meeting, we did discuss the fact that scrap metal, accumulated scrap metal has been sold and-
And then, the other one was basically what was left at the time of land that wasn't going to be a lot yet. So, a term that the county usually likes to see is an outlot, just so no one tries to put a home on there. So, it's just kind of put out there in reserve until the next project comes. So, on the, on this phase, we look at the detailed final platte.
Again, there's use of the term outlot, for the remainder of what's out there, used for residential housing in this place.
Anybody else have any other questions? I'm gonna do a roll call vote, and I'd like to start with Colleen.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mike. Plans, next on the agenda, and the only thing we have here is some claims. Mark, do you remember the motion that you made during the Finance Committee meeting? You want to repeat that for us?
Melissa, what did I say?
That wasn't a joke.
I'd like to move to approve the December 2012 non-recurring claims of $589.76, and March 2013 non-recurring claims of $66,864.98, for claims totaling $67,454.74.
Second. Any questions? Roll call vote, this time we'll start with you, Ted.
Yes.
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 We've got two items, Mr. President. First of all, at our last Public Works meeting, we did discuss the fact that scrap metal, accumulated scrap metal has been sold, and we do have a sum of $427.89. The recommendation is to use that to purchase safety clothing for village public works staff. So, it would not be a luxury item, but it would be funded from the sale of that scrap metal. And we recommend to the board approval of the use of those funds to buy the safety clothing, safety clothing.
Any questions? I did have some questions, and I got my answers. These are mostly for summer clothing, if you understand what I mean.
I think that is correct.
Because they currently don't have the reflective stuff in the summertime, that stuff.
They've got the best kind of things that they wear over the winter stuff. It's a fashion thing, George.
I love that chartreuse, it just adds so much. Okay, because this is spending, I guess we need to do a roll call. Colleen, you want to start us off?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Second item, Mr. President, we have for quite some extended period of time, as the board knows, discussing the chap yards project at our last Public Works meeting. We did, in fact, move to recommend to the full board approval of the 2013 chap yards project. And so, we are recommending that. I will, I will move approval, then if there's a second, I'll turn it over to Kevin. Give us some information. And I heard a second, so with your permission, Mr. President?
Before we go into that, would you reiterate that, your motion, one more time?
My motion was to approve the 2013 chap yards project that we have a, with option two. Yes, there were two options presented, so Kevin was going to say, we did approve of with the use of option two.
Looking for option two.
And what option two is, will become clear as Kevin gives his update.
So, just to get the village board kind of speed on where we're at. Remember, it was a couple, couple months back, the village board did approve for, that's part of the chap yards project.
No singing, no.
No karaoke.
So, what we've done is been out there, did all the total work, and generated a couple maps in front of you. The brown being what the existing buildings are out there. St. Craig Ventures owns the majority of the buildings down in that area. And we've transposed the sewer and water, the improvements themselves, down in that area. Option one being, there is existing utility easements in place for.
Kevin, just one interruption, I think everybody knows that, but they're not all buildings. That one right down there is really a, still pad site, that's where the fire was at?
Yes.
Want you to identify that?
Yep.
I think everybody knows that.
Good clarification. So, so this one here, you know, the village already has easements in place. And if we were to go ahead and put the utilities back in those existing locations, you can, you can see kind of a, they're not parallel, per se. They kind of, you know, move around in that area. So, typically with, you know, when you lay out for new, new improvements, we like to put those about eight to 10 feet away, parallel. And that option is shown in number two.
Tell us what the different colors are represented.
Okay, so the, the green would be the sanitary sewer.
Okay.
And the magenta line would be the, the water main itself.
And they're at different levels, are they not?
Yes.
Sewer being.
The sewer, the way it sits down there right now, this manhole up at the end here is real shallow. It's probably about three feet deep, and there is a past history of that line freezing in the wintertime. As part of this Third Street project that was done a number of years back, probably 13, 14 years, we did lower the sewer in this area in anticipation of, you know, this project. And when you tie onto that manhole and run it out at a minimum grade, instead of being three feet, it's going to be about 12 to 13 feet deep. So, that'll take care of that issue for freezing purposes. The water main, it is basic, basically a dead-end main. The mains themselves are fairly small in size. We are going to be upsizing those, doing some looping, per se. Going to have connection point on Gallohead Road, Cherry Circle North, and Monroe Street. And that'll do two things for you. It will actually increase the fire flows for down in that area. So, if these buildings ever want to, you know, put sprinklers in, in them, you'll have the fire flow capacity for that. It'll actually increase, or not increase, but the water quality, per se. You'll have different flows of water, so the water itself will not be stagnant, like what you have down there right now. So, the thought is, you know, with the better fire flows, more than likely, the insurance for these facilities is, you know, with a better rate, you're going to have a lower premium that you would have to pay, once these are in place. So, basically, what we're recommending is, what the Public Works Committee is recommending, that we go with option two. And that would be less disturbance, you know, pretty common to what's done out there with new utilities, and it just makes it a little bit easier for locating those in the future. So, what it's going to entail is, we're going to have to go back to these property owners, and they're going to have to release the existing easement and sign on to a, to a new document.
Is there a building missing? Nick Hyden's building? Is that that little?
Yeah, that's probably.
Do we have a separate easement for sewer and a separate easement for the water?
Yes. Just like what you, what's down there currently. That, that building isn't, I don't know if we actually physically shot that, that's kind of sitting back there a little ways. But, yeah, there is another.
Yeah, because there's a.
Building down in that area.
Because there's a fire hydrant, isn't there?
Yeah, there's one right here. And the, these symbols here represents where the new hydrants would be placed.
Have the owners of the property been contacted regarding this plan?
Not yet. That'll be something that will be kind of our next step, is approaching those people. You know, probably thinking about like having a public informational meeting to bring those folks in, and kind of introduce the project to them, along with, you know, some other things that we talked about at the committee, and that was in regards to special assessments. If the village board does want to proceed down that road, you know, we would introduce that to them also. So, you know, with the, the utilities themselves are obviously going to be losing, you know, the access road into that area. And that's, some of the things that we talked about, the committee, is, you know, does the village want to special assess those people for the, for the replacement of that? Under the current assessment policy, since this area is over 20 years, 50% would be assessed to the property owners, and then 50% would be the village share. So, and we just put some, you know, some rough numbers, we were looking at the committee level. And for each parcel, it was going to be about $6,000 to $7,000 for their share of replacing the road. And obviously, St. Craig Ventures is, you know, the majority shareholder down there, so they're going to have the largest impact for assessments.
Is there a storm sewer involved in this?
Nope. There is, you know, a storm sewer that's obviously down in that area, but we're not proposing to replace anything, no. Just the utilities themselves, sewer and water, water mains.
So, the storm sewer, and thank you for asking that, Stan. So, where's the, do you know where the storm sewer is?
We actually turned the storm sewer off, but there is some that runs along.
Between those buildings, but are they active?
They are active. There is one line that, my understanding, back in this area, that drains.
Bee high bridge, right along that, it'll lean all the way down.
Okay, so when you excavate for these two, you're not going to run into the storm sewer?
No.
No, it's not, not in that area.
Okay.
No, no.
That, I think, is what our concern was, you could.
Yeah. No, it's, it's right along the east side of this existing concrete slab. And it wraps around to a structure here, and then it ultimately ends out to Lake Malibu, or St. Craig River.
Well, one of the things that I see as you do this excavation, is you're going to be running a railroad.
Rails.
Yep.
Yeah.
And they are shown right in here.
Yeah. Who owns that, those rails?
Well, it's, technically, it's on, you know, people's property, so they would.
It's a dead line, they'll be just pulled out.
Yeah, we'll just.
That's my point.
Yep.
They're going to be pulled out. That iron is valuable.
Yep, there's some value.
So. Whoever owns that, I don't want that to become a bone of contention, like, hey, that's mine, you can't have that, no, it's mine.
It's an easement.
So.
That's something, you know, something we can, you know, if it's a public informational meeting, we can talk to those folks and see.
I'm suggesting be ready for, for how we're going to ameliorate that problem.
Yep. I mean, we would give them right to it, since it's on their property. Should they not want it, then it'll be up to the contractor for disposal, to get, you know, to, to get rid of it. Because we're obviously going to need to have those cut out of, out, out of there to put the utilities in, so. And, you know, there's probably going to be some things that we're going to find down in that area. I understand there's an old foundation that was found when they did some of the hydrant replacements and stuff down in that area, so.
Don't tell them what you're going to find. That stuff's 100 years old.
Things they might find around the old Jones Chemical Building.
So. So, the thought is, if, you know, the village board approves it, to, you know, continue on with the project. It's probably going to take, you know, two to three months to get the easements in place. Couple of months for the special assessments, and, you know, probably a couple of months for the bidding process. So, you know, we anticipate that we'd be able to start looking at bidding the project in June or July of this year. So, construction-wise, you're probably looking at, you know, a month or two, month or two for the construction, the work, including utilities and the pavement replacement, so it's not a huge project. What's that?
You see, it should be pretty clear sailing there.
Yeah, yep. Then, depending on, you know, who we would get for a contractor, you know, some of them end up bringing two crews in, and they can usually move along at a fairly fast pace, so.
While that is true, I'm looking at St. Craig Storage down there, where they have trucks going in and out all the time, and that is their business. It's going to be a disruption to that. Is there a patch access to that, though?
Nope. No, that's something we're going to have to coordinate during construction. Typically, at the end of the night, you know, that'll be open for people to come and go as they please. I mean, there's going to be enough room to get, you know, a one-way, kind of travel way in and out of there. But there is going to be some periods where it's going to be pretty difficult to get through, through there. So.
Okay. I take it, Darrell, that what our motion is, is the green light to go, to go to the next phase of this project, is that correct? Do you want to make the motion?
I did.
Thank you, you did, then Mark.
Mark seconded, I think.
Any other questions of the committee, or to Kevin? The village does have holdings down there as well.
Yes.
You want to point out them?
Yep, right in here.
Area, yep.
We were actually looking at stubbing sewer and water service out to that property, just in case there is something that does happen down in that area.
Why wouldn't you? At the time, of course.
Yeah.
Definitely, that's definitely, yeah. All right. I'm going to do a roll call on this one. Colleen, you want to start us off?
Yes.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Darrell, as I understand it, some of the plans will come out in the next one.
Whatever the number is, yeah.
Would that, and would that be offsetting the, some of what the property owners would have to pay? Something we need to look at. I'm just throwing that out.
I'm not certain how to answer that.
Okay.
Go ahead, present the question to Kevin, I'm sure.
The question is, how much of the cost of this project can be taken from the 210 fund?
Definitely the sewer and water, all that portion of it.
Okay, what wouldn't be, then?
Road.
The road.
The road, all right. That's something that I think that the property owners will want to know, what their responsibility is versus what will be covered under the 210 fund.
That's what he was mentioning about under multi-assessments.
Right, right.
That'll be in the preliminary assessment part, what the anticipated consequence will be for each parcel.
Thank you. Okay. Darrell, anything else you want to talk about?
No.
Okay. I was looking here at public safety, I see Mark sitting here, but there's no papers here.
Didn't meet, George.
I know.
Well, I just said that officially, so.
Yeah, okay. Well, thanks for coming. Thank you. Scared of that one. Public welfare.
Mr. President, public welfare did not meet in February.
Park Board.
We did meet. We are working on getting some new equipment for Glen Oaks Park. And then, I also see this Welcome to North Hudson signs, approval requested. And I think Ted might have information on that, or, or Gloria said she wanted it on the agenda?
Me?
Well, you had said you found the ordinance, or something, or.
Preliminary research into the right-of-way. And from what I can tell, I think we've got just cause to go back. I think actually we have two options. One, go back to the state and tell them that this is not a sign or billboard for business. Or two, as we like to say at ECO Lab, just do it. All right? It's less than, it's two signs or less per year, which exempts you out of the requirements from the state.
So, it sounds like we would be able to go ahead and put it in?
From what I've seen, George, yes, absolutely. But I don't know what Mark, if he's gone back to this individual and asked, or not, so.
Well, that's approval, just where they have it.
The regulations are pretty clear about what type of billboards and signs are regulated under this. And it's clearly for business advertising.
I'll move to approve the Welcome to North Hudson signs within the state right-of-way.
What you're saying here.
Subject to Mr. Head's dissection of the ordinances.
Did you just make a motion?
I did.
He did.
Would you repeat that?
I move to approve the installation of the Welcome to North Hudson signs, two on either end of North Hudson.
I'll second.
Well, he's not done yet.
Oh, sorry.
Within the state right-of-way.
I'll second.
I'd like to thank you, Ted, publicly thank you for doing the research. Appreciate that very much. All right. Anybody have any further questions?
Yeah, I have, I have a question. So, did we get just a comment from?
Yeah, I have, I have a question. So, did we get just a comment from a DOT that, oh, well, I don't think that's allowed, or did we get some actual document from them that says you cannot do that, or what did we actually get?
No, so my understanding was, uh, Mark had, uh, requested an application to put signs up and then was told by the individual that they could not be put up in the right-of-way, but I do not believe that the, uh, individual and superior understood that this was not advertising.
Right, that it was a.
That it was for village signs.
Yeah.
Right. And then looking into it, it was pretty clear that, um, there was the exemption of, uh, two signs or less per year, where they need to print an application or license. And then there was also the exemption from advertisement.
Do you have that document available that we could put in our file?
Yeah, I sent out an email on it.
I saw the email, okay.
Yep. And that came directly from the state.
Okay. Do we know exactly where we want to plant these yet?
I.
That's a part.
No.
I don't know if we need to decide that.
Yeah.
Okay.
We were just trying to get approval to do it.
Once we locate either end of the village, then we'll proceed from there.
That was good. Okay. Um, yeah, let's do a roll call. Ted, I, I'm kind of, oh, we do have a question.
Well, no, I, uh, just, I was, uh, down in Madison a couple of weeks ago and I talked to our area representative and his, having one of his staff members also look into this because he also believed that this is like, really? You know, one of those deals and they are supposed to be talking. I'm waiting for another response back from, uh, from Matt down, uh, who's in Representative Knutson's office, uh, you know, because, yes, we believe our interpretation, but, you know, as we all know, working with the state, sometimes our, you know, common sense interpretation isn't always what would be, uh, the rule. So, uh, I've also had folks working on that and, uh, so with Ted's work, I forwarded that also to them, so they didn't have to dig, you know what I mean, spend too much time on it. And so hopefully we will have, uh, response back and, uh, I have no problem moving forward with Mr. Zappa's motion and let's dig a hole.
Uh, four. Okay.
Yes.
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 We get our sign. I move that we, uh, convene in a closed session for twenty-two statute nineteen point eight-five-one-C to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility regarding wage reviews. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Well, in favor of the motion to go in a closed session, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. All right.